We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Glenn, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
All minds clear. Oh, heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much, Lord, for allowing us to come together as one, Lord. Bless each city councilman and all administrations for the mayor office. Bless us as we go through this journey together, Lord. Bless everything we have to do today, Lord, and make it progress, Lord, in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon. Here. There are no amendments to tonight's agenda under privilege of the floor. Bob Horton, regarding stand your ground laws. I'll remind you, as all speakers have under privilege of the floor, we have three minutes.
I will thank you for the privilege of the floor tonight. In my humble opinion, the great state of Ohio do not need a stand your ground law. We already have laws in place to protect the citizens of Ohio. Furthermore, if a person is threatened, he or she should call their local law enforcement agencies and try with all their might to get away from a bad situation. It is good, this is good common sense. In conclusion, if a person thinks trouble might abound in an area, they shouldn't go near that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. The consent calendar?
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item A on the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for property maintenance.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with United Way.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is also on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with United Fire Apparatus.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number three receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to dispose of vehicles on GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number four receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reinecky Lincoln for vehicle maintenance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number five receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From Judge Law requesting legislation to expend funds from the computer and special projects accounts.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation for renewal with Software Solutions, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to pay the Ohio EPA annual license fee.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Ben's Construction.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I need to change that motion. Authorize legislation.
You want to make your amendment then?
Yes. Mr. President, I move that communication number 10 be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10 and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. Amy Odom and Aloka Roy. Can I say it right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, to better view the information to be presented on the CAPR, which is the annual report on expenditure of home and CDBG funds, I invite you to join the audience. We're going to put up a screen so the home audience can also see the slides that have been given to you. And thank you, Mr. Geiger, for assisting Mrs. Roy. This will be brief, but hopefully keep moving it back a bit. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Again, it is not perfectly straight, but lacking better quality technology, this is what we're going to continue to use. This is our required, basically, annual update to the consolidated plan. This is year three of the five-year plan. This is for the year 2012, 2013. If you remember what the consolidated plan is, it is the process. Just see, I hit the enter button. There we go. The consolidated plan is a planning document required by HUD, which must be updated each year. Again, we completed the five-year plan for 2010, 2014, and August 2010, and that included the first-year action plan. This is for the reports of the activities from September of 2012 through October of 2013. Where do the funds come from? You should all hopefully be familiar by now that these are CDBG and home funds which come from the federal government. Again, reminding you, they are distinct funds. The CDBG funds can be used for a variety of activity, including housing, but also community and economic development activities specifically to aid low and moderate income persons to eliminate slum and blight and to address urgent community needs. The qualifier urgent community needs is usually a disaster or a true emergency situation within a community. Home funds, on the other hand, can only be used for housing activities to assist households with income less than 80% of the area median income. In Lima, that's about 47.5. This is a quick map that shows you the areas of the city which are eligible for CDBG funds. The blue area shows you that clearly over three-fourths of the city is eligible for CDBG funds activities, and the area within the red outlined area is a targeted neighborhood revitalization area where we try to concentrate the majority of our funds. I believe we have tried to concentrate over 60% of our funds within those areas. When must this plan be complete? We have to get our report on last year's activity by HUD by December 20th of this year. And again, that covers October, I'm sorry, I always say this backwards, October 2012 through September 30th, 2013. How much money for that program year, the year we have just finished? We received about $946,000 in CDBG funds, in new funds. That was lower than last year previously by about $178,000, and we received $251,000 in home entitlement funds, housing funds, which was also down significantly from the year prior by about $115,000. This again shows the pattern of grants we have received in CDBG and home, and is unfortunately not a encouraging one, is that we've received about 37% less from 2005 through 2012, and we anticipate those funds to continue to diminish. So how were they expended? In the first slide, we'll show you again the combination of funds that we did receive in both home and CDBG funds. These are the new dollars, but it shows that the majority of those funds go into community development activities, a very small amount in economic development activity, only 1%, 29% into housing development, and 15% into administration. Tonight, again, we're going to be reporting on the current year, the planned three-year, the 12, 13, which we've just completed. We'll talk about any updates that have occurred in that period and actually see how we did because we had to state what our goals were for that year and how we did in achieving those goals. Under housing development, it shows that over $436,000 were spent in housing-related activities. 29% were spent on First Home Lima Down Payment Assistance, total set-aside funds and operations were about 13%. Home repairs and home renew made about 23%. Housing counseling, the housing that we provided, is about 6% of it. And housing administration looks like a large amount, 30%, but we'll discuss that as we go through, which is what kinds of activities that has funded. Under new housing, we had a fairly low goal because we were just asking New Lima to complete the Whittier Place project within this year. They had a goal of one unit, which now completes 10 units, including the one above on that site. All the new infrastructure has been completed for that site, and within this year, we also had to account for some remaining funds from two units on Pearl, those which were provided to Habitat in the year prior. Those funds were reallocated to other housing projects, put back into the mix. New Lima also receives from home dollars because they are a community housing development organization. They can receive up to 10% of the new home funds. They received less than that last year, which was $12,000. They not only use that to administer their own program, but assist with property maintenance training for first-time homebuyers and administer the housing counseling application process. In housing development, on home repairs, again, because of the diminishing amount of funds that we have, we didn't have a very large number anticipated, but we achieved that goal. Home repairs were provided to six homeowners, and the beneficiaries, 83% were female-headed households, and 71% of the minority. First Home Lima, the program I think we're all very proud of, is when we provide down payment assistance to new homebuyers within the city of Lima. 16 was our goal, and 16 was achieved. $126,000 was expended in down payment assistance, which resulted in about $891,000 in home purchases. Again, the beneficiaries, interestingly, 83% of them were below 40 years of age. Most of them, 56% were female heads of household, and 19% were minority. We've done some mapping, oh, excuse me. Also, we did a renew loan. A renew loan is a loan, which is up to $25,000 for home repair. We've had fewer persons interested in this product, but we did assist one person in achieving home repairs for $16,000. 60 households received assistance through housing counseling. Again, those are housing, people who are going through the housing homeownership training before receiving down payment assistance. Of those 60 persons or households that entered the program in that year, 34 actually received credit for completing within that year. There is sometimes, depending upon the timing of classes, we will see most of those people complete the program in this current year. $27,000 was put into the counseling portion of that program. And again, on the housing rehab administration, again, not only does that assist in direct service delivery, but it also helps provide partial salaries within this year. If you remember, we didn't do this in the current year, but in last year, it provided assistance for salary and benefits to include the Assistant Law Director and the paralegal, as well as the Associate Planner, the Grant System Analyst, and the Secretary for CDBG and home activities within DCD. This shows you where the new homes were purchased, 16 of them, and this shows you where the renew, the one renew was made and the six, excuse me, home repairs were made. Another thing that we've shown you there, this, by the way, is on the city website. There's a copy available, the full document, at the city website, at the city council office, and also the Department of Community Development, if you'd like to see or comment on all of this information. The analysis of impediments to fair choice is also something we are required to do. Again, we are continuing to update, and you will be receiving at the next meeting of council, a brief update on the new information about housing choice in Lima and Allen County. I guess I need to comment that it is being updated annually, but right now, we're updating it to comply with new guidelines in 2013 to correspond with new policies that apply to home and CDBG dollars. The focus is broader than just housing, but we'll be talking about that at the next council meeting. Community development, again, a large amount of the funds that we receive go into those activities categorized as community development. 32% into property maintenance and code activity, only 1% for summer rec, the summer programs, 26% into curbs and streets. The PSSP program or Police Aid Program receives 1% of the funds. Demolition of structures, 21%. We do list also the aerial truck because it was something that was funded within the last year, but if remember, we found a way to move those funding into another area. Neighborhood Development Services receives 11% of the community development funding, and Parks Improvement receives 6%. Again, community gardens was something that was funded, but because of an ability to find other funds, those funds were moved into another activity. Looking at those individually, whoops, we'll go back a minute. There we go. Neighborhood services, the partnership that we have with Lacnip and 17 neighborhood associations produced over 28,000 volunteer hours or 3,000 volunteers for $96,709. Park improvements that were completed, the goal was to make improvements in two parks, and there was a fountain added to the fish habitat at Faroe Park. The Welcome to Lima signs were restored at the entryways, and Schoonover Park Pool also received restoration efforts for $48,900. Again, highlighting the activities of our neighborhood associations with two township groups, the actual dollar value of those hours equates to $615,000 with the volunteer hours donated by 3,000 volunteers. So again, it's something we always like to comment on and thank our neighborhood associations for contributing back to the city of Lima. Property maintenance, again, a large portion of the funds, over $263,000, goes into assisting payment for our inspectors and some of their costs, supplies and costs, to do over 6,500 inspections on 2,000 and 200 housing units. Over 375 complaints on junk auto were processed, and last year, we maintained 576 vacant lots through our specified parcel program. The recreation program, again, even though receives a small amount of money, serves a great number of children, with 151 being directly funded by CDBG funds, although there were additional children that were funded with other outside sources, where over 200 kids actually received services from the summer playground program. In terms of our property maintenance activities, we're always asked what kinds of things are accomplished. As usual, trash and weeds make up the largest number of inspections simply because they come back. 41% of the inspections are weeds, 38% are trash. If you would combine structural issues, unfit for habitation, and board up, which would make that about 16% are relating to buildings and structures, and the remaining 5% are for junk auto. This shows you where property maintenance activities were undertaken. Obviously, there are so many. Each of those dots do not represent a single inspection, but may show more than one, but it does show you where the concentration of activity has occurred. Similarly, this map is going to show you streets and curb reconstruction. All of these are in CDBG-eligible areas and 45 blocks of street, and about 4,470 square feet of corner sidewalks. The city is responsible for putting in the corners, were paid for by CDBG funds. That estimated, HUD asks us to estimate the number of persons that that actually contacts or influences, and over 4,000 people and 1,400 households benefit from those street improvements directly, as well as 31 businesses. And under economic development, we had one small program that we've attempted, which is our partnership with Road State in the Process-Operation Program. It's a small expenditure, about $9,520, and 35 Lima residents enrolled. Of those that enrolled, 10 were certified and 25 were incomplete in the program. That seems fairly high, but if you look at the overall program, I think we had another slide on that, it does show that the number of persons that signed up for the basic course, 35, 10 completed the classes, which assisted them in then getting referrals and interviews for employment. We had hoped for 40 to 50 persons to sign up for the class. 35 did sign up, and of the 35, again, they had 49 in the class in total, 35 from Lima, 20 achieved certification. So if you look at that, about half of the class, half of the people who achieved certification were from Lima. So it shows that kind of the general use of that program. General administration, what it costs to basically run these programs, we have some required services we must provide if we accept CDBG and home dollars. One is fair housing, again, a great program, and I believe that Veronica McLaren was here to talk a little bit about that. For $17,000, nearly $18,000, over 633 contacts were logged assisting people with housing issues related to fair housing. In general administrative costs for the program under CDBG, $207,590 were expended. Again, that shows a variety of service delivery costs, as well as partial salary benefits for six staff members through the program year. It also includes some of the property maintenance training that is provided to First Home Lima persons who are getting the down payment assistance. That's very quick, and I just wanted to really provide this to you so it will hopefully lead you to look further at the document that is available online at our website, also available at the front desk and at the city library. This does show, how does this stack up, is from the year that we are finishing to the year that we're going into. Last year, which we have just reported on, we had about a total of about $2.2 million to work with in new entitlement funds. This year, which started in October, we have 1.5 million. That's about a $712,000 decrease in funds from '13 to '14. So it's about a 30% decrease, 32% decrease with CDBG, and a 35% decrease in home. As I've said over and over, expect this trend to continue. The CDBG and home funds, in all of the travel I've done in the last month to a variety of economic development, housing, and community development conferences and seminars, all indicate these funds will be more difficult for Lima to obtain because we are of a size which is no longer considered eligible for entitlement dollars. If we go to being funded in a different way, meaning having to compete for these funds, we expect this to decrease even further. The change in allocation to funds will probably occur in 2017, meaning we will continue to be an entitlement community through that period, but do expect to see these to continue to decrease. This simply means we're going to need to continue to make good choices about how we use these dollars and use them to the best leveraging advantage to our other funds that are attracted to the city. So I appreciate your time. If there are any quick questions from council? Yes, sir.
I have two.
Okay.
I said this about two years ago, going to page 16, declare pathways at the end, 10 are from Lima after $95,000, $20,000 has been spent. I asked then, and I will ask again, is there any way that they could report to us where they're doing a follow-up with these individuals to make sure that they're working in line?
Yes.
They're getting their training and they're leaving.
Yes, Mr. Law, I'm sure that roads would be happy to come out and do that. I know when they make the request for application every year, they give a quick update on what they've done, but I would be happy to pass that on to Mr. D'Elia and have him come back and give an update. I know that they have just started recruiting for the next round of classes, so I'll make sure he does that for you.
Next question is on page 6. I don't know if I'm understanding this right. We had, with the new Lima, one got constructed, one unit got constructed.
Correct.
And we used $12,175 to counsel them on how to do property maintenance and training?
No, that is the total operation set aside, which assists them with, again, their daily operations, but as part of that, they also assist the city. Part of the deal is that they assist the city by providing the training for the First Home Lima on the property maintenance. There is a, I believe, a four-hour segment where they actually take them to a home and show them how to do basic maintenance, identify maintenance. They are also assisting them in doing a housing maintenance budget, that to be able to graduate from the class, you have to understand what you're going to spend on your house after you buy it.
And that costs us $12,000?
Yes, because, again, we're assisting them with their general operations, as well as they're providing, oh, also doing the housing counseling application process for us, doing all of the income qualification for anyone who applies for the First Home And I would be happy to have them come and speak to you about that. They, again, process about 60 people a year. What that means is they have to do all of the income, they have to get all the information on income.
Can they provide us with a number of exactly how many they count?
Absolutely. We get a monthly report on that, and I'd be happy to get that to you or have them come talk to you about those services.
Right. Please.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you for your patience. We are accepting comments for 15 days on this document. Again, they can be emailed in or sent in in writing. We would like your feedback on how CDBG and home funds are being used in the city of Lima. This document must be mailed to HUD by the 20th, and our comment period ends on the 17th. Thank you.
Did you answer on the website or you want to personally?
Either. I think we can take comment either way.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is report.
Next on the agenda is reports of committees, human resources, Ms. Townsend.
Yes, Mr. President. I hope everyone's had a chance to read this expansive report. And as such, I would move to receive, file and approve.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file and approve the Human Resources Committee report as submitted by Counselor Townsend. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 220-13.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 220-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 220-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 220-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 222-13, I'm sorry. 221-13.
Leaving a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 221-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 221-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 221-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 222-13.
Amending 2013 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
I move that ordinance 222-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 223-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a local public agency agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to enable the city to accept, expend, administer and draw down funds for the all-cap road sidewalks project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that ordinance number 223-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 223-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 223-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 224-13.
To amend the contract of Mastercraft Concrete Inc. as authorized by ordinance 29-13.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 224-13 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion, the second, is to handle, to pass ordinance 224-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 225-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 225-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 225-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 226-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reinecke Lincoln, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance, I move that ordinance 226-13 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 226-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 227-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 228-13.
Authorizing payment from the Lima Municipal Court Computer and Special Projects Funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
I move that ordinance 228-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 228-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 228-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 229-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with United Way of Greater Lima.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 229-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 229-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
As a member of the Board of the United Way, I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Nieper. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Abstain.
And Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 229-13 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote with one abstention. Takes us to miscellaneous business. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I've got a couple of things here. First of all, I want to thank everyone that helped out with Jerry Lewis, and they helped tremendously. They had a lot of folks there, and this is my second year I helped out, and it was really great. And I like, they saved a lot. Also, Mr. Chivers, everybody played a part in there, so it was outstanding when you see everybody there, smiling, happy, eating and having fun. All the McDonald peoples came out and helped his employees, and I just want to give them a big ups, that was great. And it makes me so happy when I see everybody pitching in, showing our hometown pride. Also, Councilman Lowe with his drum group, that is great. I know he put a lot of time into it, and it was in Bluffton. And I hope to get to bring the guys in here and perform, perform. You know, there's some great kids, though, you know, and I know it's a lot of work you probably do, more than you're doing the work, but it's great. Appreciate you guys on that. Also, I want to thank my lovely wife. We have helped fund the 345 turkeys we gave out this year. And we had more, but we gave out more, but, and I appreciate the people who helped volunteer helping us get them passed out. My wife had to slow me down, said, dear, you can't, don't forget you retired, so you can't keep passing out turkeys. But, you know, I want to help everybody out, though. You know, I just can't, I just want to help them out and give people, and make sure they have a good Thanksgiving, just like me. So just hope and pray that we continue, the folks that came and got turkeys, they'll be able to help out and pass turkeys out next year, and that's what we want to look at. Also, we want to make sure that, we had a problem with the garbage days mixed up a little bit, and I appreciate the utility department taking care of that. Most of the garbage is taken care, they're getting around. Most people thought it was coming on Saturday, but it came on a Friday, and we had it taken care of Monday, so I appreciate the reception for taking care of that for us. We will be having a meeting on it for liquor license. It'll be Monday the ninth at 6:00 PM here in the council chamber. So we'll have to give them that, and then hopefully that we can get in contact, any bars want to come in and discuss what we're going to be doing about liquor licensing. So I already talked to all my board members, everybody agreed on 6 o'clock on the ninth. Also, we had some, a lot of leads there that didn't get picked up right there because they missed the date, and I don't think we're going to have another date to get around and do it. But some people, letting some people know, you can put it in garbage bags and let the garbage man get some of them, because a lot of them's planned out there. And one more thing there, I think that's it. Thank you, guys.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'd like to, being on the committee of the Safety Services, to Mr. Glenn's chair, you just said the liquor licenses. Do you have the other subject? Parking?
No, we're going to do the parking next.
Okay.
We'll do another day.
You're just doing the one?
Just doing the one.
Okay. Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Yeah, we're going to do that.
I just want to clarify, as we talked earlier. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Ms. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Derek.
Just an announcement for the Westgate Neighborhood Association's Christmas meeting on December 15th at 6:00 PM at the Chamberlain Huckreedy Funeral Home. They have a great dinner there, and I hope everybody from the Westgate Association turns out. Thank you.
Mr. Nieper?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. McLean?
I think, Mr. President, just glad that we made it through Thanksgiving, because I sure had my fill of turkey over the weekend, so I do appreciate, it was a safe one for everybody, and remember that this is the month of giving. You have your favorite charities, keep them local, give till you can't give. There's a lot of needy, needy people out there that need your help this year. I think we've had a very struggle, struggling in our economy, and there's a lot of need. So if you can buy a toy, drop it off, I think we're Toys for Tots here at the building here, drop them off. I'm sure that they will go to a good place and give as much as you can give for the month of December. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Three quick items. I would like to say, first of all, it's hunting season, so be cognizant of the roads while you're driving. Had one run in front of me. I wasn't quite in the city, but I was near the city. I couldn't even believe the deer was where he was at, right by the rob overpass. So be cautious of that. The other thing I was going to say is, there's a lot of families that are in need. One of the things that I will be doing at Black Lace Hair Salon is collecting for families. If you have some goods that you could donate, or monetary goods you can donate, we have a fund that we're setting up. There's two families that I know for sure. Young lady has four kids, another young lady has three kids, and the husband is unemployed at the moment. So if you can help in any way, please contact me. And I would also like to say, congratulations to the Johnson family. Mr. Devonte Johnson of Lima Senior High School was the recipient of a $1,000 scholarship from the Omega Psi Phi fraternity. I went down to Pickwa this past weekend, and Mr. Chris Jackson actually represented our city that evening, but it was great to see these kids doing good things. And I believe his grade point average was like a 3.96, I mean, right there, but he was a fine young gentleman, fine family stock. So I just want to say hats off, and I think we need to start reporting the good that the kids at Lima Senior High are doing instead of the negative. So I just, again, hats off to the Johnson family and the parents who are doing a fine job with their son. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Teppin? Nothing this evening. Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to announce the Hope Neighborhood Meeting is tomorrow night, Tuesday, December 3rd at 6:30. This is their Christmas cover-dish dinner with the meat being provided. Ms. Odom, while you were speaking, it reminded me with this announcement, we had asked for your attendance and also Mr. Elstro's to the meeting for the present, Mr. Jackson. So I just wanted to do a reminder of that, and someone from the Health Department is going to be there as well. So I would appreciate that.
Ms. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Just so you're aware, Mr. Elstro is traveling, so he will not be there.
Well, I'm hoping he's appointed someone, because we spoke a few times on this. Did you have it on your calendar? Yeah, okay. Yes, 6:30 at Unity Elementary School. Mayor, I, I hope with the announcement with his department, he's appointed someone to attend. If not, we'll, we'll deal with it at another meeting, if that's...
What is the topic that they were asking?
It was doing with some housing, issues with drainage and things like that. I mean, it's a combination of...
Strong drain?
Yeah, and sewers, and it's a combination of issues. That's why we've got multiple departments. So I talked to them, you know, a month ago in their last meeting, so, thank you. With what we passed tonight with United Way and CDBG allocation of the $10,000, I know they've made announcements, but I want to say here tonight, they have set up a workshop, says here, you know, who should attend, staff, board members, volunteers of all organizations, interested in learning about grants seeking and evaluation. It's going to be held at Lima Public Library Basement at 650 Market Street. It will be December 12th and the 13th, 8:30 to 4:30 with a one-hour break at noon to 1:00. The program description, it goes on to say, is a two-day comprehensive, hands-on bootcamp covers everything from winning grants-related terminology to learning how to conduct funding research, searches, to actually writing in the critical high-point review sections of assured winning grant application. The cost is free. They do ask for a $5 donation to help cover refreshments. They need registrations by December 10th, Tuesday, December 10th, and you need to call the United Way of Greater Lima, and their number is 419-227-6341. And finally, my goodness, President, if I could ask possibly Bob to come up, speak on the LACNIP holiday sales at the Resource Center. Are you familiar with that?
Unfortunately, Ms. Adams, I'm not.
Okay. On December 10th, the Resource Center on Spring Street, they're going to be open, I believe, they're going to be open around 9:00, and they will be selling their beanieware and items like that to anyone for gifts for Christmas time, for visitors that come in, family. So if you can, please support that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. I don't have anything this evening. I only have a reason for an executive session. Mr. Teppin?
Mr. President, I move that Lima City Council adjourn into executive session for purposes of imminent litigation.
Second.